Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, June 25, 2019. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm your deputy city clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Logan Showalter. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Burgess presents Bill Number 1800. Resolution authorizing the city solicitor on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to petition the Orphans Court Division of the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County to request the transfer of a portion of a certain lot now part of Enright Parklet in the East Liberty Neighborhood in the city of Pittsburgh to Penley Park South, Inc., in exchange for an abutting parcel of land approximately equal size and value as the subject property to be transferred from PPS to the city of Pittsburgh for consolidation with and use as part of Enright Parklet, plus all necessary or appropriate expenses incurred by the city and/or upon such other terms and conditions as the court or the city authorize and/or direct. Bill Number 1801. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant and a total sum of $3,900 in favor of Medico Legal, Inc., for expert witness services related to the action filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County. Bill Number 1802. Resolution amending Resolution 234 of 219, which authorized the issuance of a warrant in favor of Timothy Arnold by changing the issuance of the warrant as follows: In favor of Timothy M. Arnold and his counsel, Villanova Law Offices, in an amount not to exceed $5,400 in full and final settlement of a police-related matter. Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 1803. Ordinance accepting a new street name, Beehive Street, in the 15th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. Bill Number 1804. Ordinance accepting a new street name, Eliza Street, in the 15th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh as per recommendation of the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. Bill Number 1805. Ordinance accepting a new street name, Guadalupe Place, in the 25th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. Bill Number 1806. Ordinance accepting a new street name, Hopper Place, in the 6th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. Councilman Corio Connor presents Bill Number 1807. Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for Bobby Wallow, 200 Ingrid Place, Carnegie, PA. Bill Number 1808. Resolution authorizing the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement to execute the Alka-Sand Service Agreement Amendment by and among the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority, the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, the Western Westmoreland Municipal Authority, the North Huntington Township Municipal Authority, the Township of North Huntington, the Penn Township Sewer Authority, and the Township of Penn regarding the Cavitzville Adara area. This piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilman Corio Connor. Councilwoman Erica Strausberger presents Bill Number 1809. Ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct, Article 5 Discrimination, Chapter 659 Unlawful Practices, Sections 659.02 (Unlawful Employment Practices), 659.03 (Unlawful Housing Practices), and 659.04 (Unlawful Public Accommodation Practices) to explicitly prohibit employment, housing, and public accommodation discrimination based on gender identity and gender expression, create more inclusive definitions of protected classes, and add gender-inclusive language. This piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilwoman Erica Strausberger and Council President Bruce Kraus. Council President Kraus presents Bill Number 1810. Resolution appointing David C. Bush to serve as a member of the Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire October 31, 2022. Bill Number 1811. Resolution appointing J. Matthew Landis to serve as a member of the Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire March 31, 2023. Bill Number 1812. Resolution informing City Council of the reappointment of Dr. Emma Lucas Darby as a member of the Citizens Police Review Board with a term to expire October 31, 2023. Bill Number 1813. Resolution informing City Council of the reappointment of Sheldon Williams as a member of the Citizens Police Review Board with a term to expire October 31, 2023. And Bill Number 1814. Resolution appointing David O'Neufar to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2021. That concludes the reading of the legislation. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, June 25, 2019. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mrs. Harris?
Mr. Lavelle?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Ms. Strausberger?
Here.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Kell Smith, good morning. Welcome. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we ask that you would then remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all. You may be seated.
Mr. President, I should have asked before. Can we have a moment of silence for Ann Kelly? She's the mother of Guy Kelly, the officer that was killed on, you know, April 4, and she just passed away this weekend.
Oh, I didn't, I was not aware of that. Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes.
Moment of silence?
Yes. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilwoman.
I'd like to say one thing about her, a few things about her, because I think, I'm sorry if everyone just indulge with me for a moment. She was an amazing woman. She, I met her when she was involved in the PTA at Westwood School. She's from Ferrywood. She raised Guy Kelly in Ferrywood. And I tell people all the time, I've known her since our kid, my son who's now, my youngest son who's now 29, was in kindergarten and went to school with her daughter. And she was always a fighter for the kids and so courageous and did so many things for the Ferrywood community. But after her son, Officer Kelly, was killed on, on April 4, it changed her very, her very being. And you just could always see, and she was here before, and you could see the pain in her eyes and know the pain in her heart constantly. And so I, I think her family has peace in knowing that she's now with her son, but my condolences to the family here. And I know that everyone's really thinking of her and feeling her great loss for the Ferrywood community and for our community in general, because she was known throughout.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
We have no proclamations to be presented this morning, but we do have a will of council to be presented by Councilwoman Gross. How do you like to proceed, Councilwoman? Want to come up and read?
I'm happy with the clerk, for the clerk to read it.
Good.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have a copy? Does it? Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents, whereas child marriage is often forced marriage, since children cannot be expected to retain legal counsel, locate safe housing and file for divorce. And whereas nearly a quarter million children were wed between the years 2000 and 2010. And whereas girls who marry before the age of 19 are 50% more likely to drop out of high school and four times less likely to complete college than their unwed peers. And whereas women who married in their teenage years tend to have more children, more closely spaces, resulting in an inability to access educational opportunities. And whereas, until very recently, child marriage was legal under federal law in all 50 states, until Delaware and New Jersey led the nation to endless abuse of the human rights of children. And whereas the poverty, stress, and lack of education creates a 23% greater risk of serious health problems like heart attacks, diabetes, cancer, and strokes in those who were married as children. And whereas girls have a fundamental right to self-determination, safety, and education. And whereas the Pennsylvania State Senate SB 81 and the State Houses HB 360 will end child marriage in Pennsylvania, becoming the third state to do so, granting the freedoms from abuse to all children. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of here, City of Pittsburgh hereby urges the Pennsylvania legislator to urgently pass State Bill 81 and House Bill 360 to grant the right of self-determination to children.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, I just want to thank the advocates for bringing this forward to support these House, State, the State House and State Senate bills. Clearly, it's 2019, and this is a public policy issue that is long overdue to address. And so I, I hope that my colleagues will be supportive and that Harrisburg will listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you. So in the form of a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, Councilwomen, very much. That concludes the proclamation portion of the council meeting and takes us into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before City Council, of course, will have three minutes in which to do so. I would like to take this opportunity to remind everyone here to speak that our rules of council are clear when they state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are at this time, or could at another time come before this council. We will not permit profanity and we will maintain order at all times. We ask that you please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, then your time will have expired. May we have our first speaker, please? Morning, Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Pittsburgh City, Oakland, Honolulu, Honolulu City, Hawaii. Global Intelligence Society candidate for president, 2020, globalintelligencesoociety.org. A few words about China and India. This is June. Global Intelligence Society sponsored Asian Intelligence Month. The GDP rise for China is spectacular. 10% over the last 30 years, average annual, by comparison, in the United States has not risen above 3% GDP annual. In India, last year, 6% annual. I just think this is a form of national, very advanced, if not genius-level intelligence on behalf of one that is really not a democratic polity, China, and the other, which is one of the most vibrant democracies on the planet. Concerns of Pittsburgh City Council are profanity and parentthood. Mr. Kraus, male, Pittsburgh District Representatives, can get paternity leave? Yes? Mr. Kraus, is the word B-R-E-A-S-T a piece of profanity? According to the impermissible Profane Words List for Public Comment, lawfully passed according to Pittsburgh City Rules of Council III, Section 4(c) Public Comment, and I Rules, Section 3, by council, so that a citizen possessing better information can project a more accurate, more acute intelligence on a matter of concern, that person can avoid censorious interference by you and compulsory expulsion. But there is no such lawful Profane Words List, is there? Never been passed. No due process. Breasts. Both male and females have breasts, and some, very few males, lactate. If a lactating Pittsburgh adult male goes to Shenley Park, District 8, around 12 noon, takes out one of his breasts and begins to breastfeed his baby, does an Oakland-based Pittsburgh police officer have the authority to arrest him for indecent exposure? What do you think, Ms. Strausberger? Ms. Strausberger, Council Representative, District 8, do you support a lactating male's right to publicly breastfeed his baby? Do you support a lactating female's right to publicly breastfeed her baby in Pittsburgh? Do you do that? Would you do that in this, in this council room? Or risk being banned or banished by Mr. Kraus? If one of the district representatives who are male has a baby, does he get the same paternity leave, $15,000 for three months that you got?
Okay, thanks, Dr. Miller. May we have our next speaker, please? Is there anyone else here this morning wishing to address council? Then seeing no further speakers, we'll close public comment and go into presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Council President, I'm sorry, Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1800. Resolution authorizing the city solicitor on behalf of the city to petition the Orphans Court Division of the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County to request the transfer of a portion of a certain lot now part of Enright Parklet in the East Liberty Neighborhood of the city, in exchange for an abutting parcel of land approximately equal size and value as the subject property to be transferred from PPS to the city with and use as part of Enright Parklet, plus all necessary or appropriate expenses incurred by the city and/or upon such other terms and conditions as the court or the city authorize and/or direct. Bill Number 1801. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant and a total sum of $3,900 in favor of Medico Legal Incorporated for expert witness services related to the action filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County. Bill Number 1802. Resolution amending Resolution Number 234, which authorizes the issuance of a warrant in favor of Timothy Arnold by changing the issuance of the warrant as follows: In favor of Timothy M. Arnold and his counsel, Villanova Law Offices, in an amount not to exceed $5,400 in full and final settlement of a police-related matter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Burgess?
I'd like to make a motion that we waive Rule 8 on Bill 1803.
Thank you. May I have a second on the motion?
1802, what did I say?
1802.
1802, I'm sorry. I said 03, but I meant 02.
We have a second on the motion? Do we have discussion on the motion to waive the rules on Bill 1802? Then seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? 1802 then will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Councilman Coggo, our Chair of Urban Recreation?
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development?
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1803. Ordinance accepting a new street name, Beehive Street, in the 15th Ward of the city as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. Bill Number 1804. Ordinance accepting a new name street, Eliza Street, in the 15th Ward of the city as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. Bill Number 1805. Ordinance accepting a new street name, Guadalupe Place, in the 25th Ward of the city as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. Bill Number 1806. Ordinance accepting a new street name, Hopper Place, in the 6th Ward of the city as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris.
Councilwoman Harris presents Bill Number 1816. Resolution amending Resolution Number 280, providing for the filing of a grant with the 2017 CDBG program, so as to perform reprogramming within City Council from Northside Senior Programming, Southwest Pittsburgh CDC, to Allegheny West, and Zealous Hope Project, $3,000. Bill Number 1817. Resolution amending Resolution Number 281, so as to perform reprogramming within City Council from Northside Senior Programming, Southwest Pittsburgh CDC, to Allegheny West and Zealous Hope Project, $3,500 to Allegheny West, and $3,000 to Zealous Hope Project. Bill Number 1818. Resolution amending Resolution Number 278, so as to reprogram funds within City Council's office from Parks and Recreation, Northside Senior Programming, to Kitchen of Grace, $2,000, Allegheny West, $7,530, and Cameron Welch Youth Baseball, $2,970. Bill Number 1819. Resolution amending Resolution Number 279, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from Parks and Recreation, Northside Senior Programming, to Kitchen of Grace, $2,000, Allegheny West, $7,530, and Cameron Welch Youth Baseball, $2,970. Bill Number 1820. Resolution amending Resolution 386, providing for an agreement with community orgs to perform reprogramming within City Council from Poise Found, Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank, Preservation Pittsburgh, and District 1 OMV, Citizens Participation to Cameron Welch Youth Baseball, District 1 DPW Projects, Troy Hill Community Center, Brothers and Sisters Emerging, Urban Academy of Greater Pittsburgh School, Naomi's Place, Earthen Vessels Outreach, Reading is Fundamental, Neighborhood Allies, and Community Theater. Bill Number 1821. Resolution amending Resolution 369, providing for an agreement with community orgs to perform reprogramming within City Council from Poise Foundation, Holy Wisdom Parish Food Bank, Preservation Pittsburgh, Allegheny City Historic Gallery, and District 1 to Cameron Welch Youth Baseball, District 1 Department of Public Works Projects, Troy Hill Community Center, Brothers and Sisters Emerging, Urban Academy of Greater Pittsburgh School, Naomi's Place, Earthen Vessels Outreach, Reading is Fundamental, and Community Theater, due in business as Kelly Strayhorn Theater, $10,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
I mentioned the Rule 8, so it's on the agenda for tomorrow.
Councilwoman, you brought this over first thing this morning, right? If I'm not mistaken?
I'm sorry.
You brought the legislation over to the clerk's office first thing this morning?
No, I didn't. I guess it was the, our budget department has had it.
I just want to...
We'll be able to discuss it tomorrow. The problem was it was supposed to be put on last week. Budget Department did not give it to the clerk's office. So they were to have it at the clerk's office this week, and I wanted it to go with the rest of the movements that I've made this week.
Just wanted to make sure the publics have ample time to, to view legislation and digest legislation.
Right.
So the Councilwoman wishes to waive the rules on these bills that came over this morning, so that they may appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Was that in the form of a motion, Councilwoman? Do we have a second on the motion to waive the rules?
Second.
Do we have a second? Do we have discussion?
On all of them.
Do we have a discussion? All the bills under your committee?
They're all CDBG.
Yes.
And they're all around $5,000 average.
I'm going to work, Councilwoman. Okay, no discussion?
Or just have another discussion?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstentions?
Thank you.
Bills, let's see here. Bills 1816, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21 will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Next, we have our Chair of Public Safety Services, Councilman Lavelle.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. May I have Councilman, Lavelle for Councilman O'Connor?
Mr. President?
We have, I don't have Councilman O'Connor on here.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1807. Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for Bobby Wallow. Bill Number 1808. Resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement to execute the Alka-Sand Service Agreement Amendment by and among the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority, the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, the Western Westmoreland Municipal Authority, the North Huntington Township Municipal Authority, the Township of North Huntington, the Penn Township Sewer Authority, and the Township of Penn regarding the Cavitzville Adara area.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Kell Smith, our Chair of Public Work Services.
Good morning, Mr. President. No new papers.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Strausberger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strausberger presents Bill Number 1809. Ordinance amended and supplemented the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI Conduct, Article 5 Discrimination, Chapter 659 (Unlawful Practices), unlawful employment practices, unlawful housing practices, unlawful public accommodations practices to explicitly prohibit employment, housing, and public accommodation discrimination based on gender identity and gender expression, create more inclusive definitions of protected classes, and add gender-inclusive language.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair, I do have one sponsored bill. Madam Clerk, if I may?
Council President Kraus presents Bill Number 1815. Resolution authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and/or the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract with Prime Gov Solutions for a legislative management system. The total cost over five years should not exceed $255,912.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I have five appointments.
Bill Number 1810. Resolution appointing David C. Bush to serve as a member of the Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire October 31, 2022. Bill Number 1811. Resolution appointing J. Matthew Landis to serve as a member of the Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire March 31, 2023. Bill Number 1812. Resolution informing City Council of the reappointment of Dr. Emma Lucas Darby as a member of the Citizen Police Review Board with a term to expire October 31, 2023. Bill Number 1813. Resolution informing City Council of the reappointment of Sheldon Williams as a member of the Citizen Police Review Board with a term to expire October 31, 2023. Bill Number 1814. Resolution appointing David F. O'Neufar to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On bills 1810 and 11, which are new appointments to the Commission on Human Relations, what is the pleasure?
Question.
Councilman?
So the, 1812 and 1813?
This is why I'm taking bills separately.
Yes, I'm just, I want to make sure I'm clear. Those, those do not need our approval. Right? Does the other bills, 1810, 1811, do they, do they, do they need our approval? Okay.
So on bills 1810 and 11, I, I will, Council, or Madam Clerk, Councilwoman Harris?
I motion on 1810, 11, and 14. I motion on eighteen ten, eleven, and fourteen, uh, to be interviewed.
I didn't ask about fourteen. I'm asking about eight and ten, ten and eleven. Your desire is to bring those in for interview, Councilwoman?
My desire is for all three. The third one is not...
Momentarily. Right now, I'm asking, what is the pleasure on eighteen ten and eleven? And that is to bring them in for interview? And that is in the form of a motion?
Anything you want.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That was in form of a motion.
May I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, we have discussion on the motion for bill eighteen ten and eleven to bring those in for interview. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? We will schedule interviews for eighteen ten and eleven. On bills eighteen twelve and eighteen thirteen, these are reappointments to the Citizens Police Review Board that do not require council confirmation. What's the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman Burgess?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. May I have a second, please? Have a motion to approve and a second on eighteen twelve and thirteen. Uh, further discussion? Is that Councilwoman Harris? I can't tell.
Nope.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed abstentions? We have approved eighteen twelve and eighteen thirteen. On eighteen fourteen, which is a new appointment to the Civil Service Commission, what is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman Harris?
Motion to interview.
We have a motion to interview on eighteen fourteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to interview in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed abstentions? We'll schedule eighteen fourteen for interview as well. Uh, also then, that moves us on to unfinished business. Before us, we have a number of appointments to the Clean Pittsburgh Commission and the Equal Opportunity Review Commission. Interviews were held last Wednesday.
Bill sixteen forty-five, Resolution Appointing Erica Ninos as a Commissioner of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission of the City for a Term to Expire, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Bill number seventeen seventeen, Resolution Appointing Jenna Kramer as a Member of the Pittsburgh Equal Opportunity Review Commission with a Term to Expire, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you again, motion, or, interviews were held last Wednesday. May I have a motion to approve?
No move.
May I have a second? Motion to approve and a second, we have discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? Those bills are passed. Our next order of business then is Reports of Committee for Final Action. Our, uh, first committee of the morning is our Committee on Finance and Law. Our Chair is Councilman Burgess. Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number seventeen ninety-six, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for June nineteenth, twenty nineteen, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seventeen sixty-eight, Resolution Approving/Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city or hereby authorized to enter into an amendment to extend the existing intergovernmental corporation agreement between the city and the county of Allegheny for the enterprise resource planning by increasing the total amount by six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for continuing support of the J.D. Edwards E R P system. Bill number seventeen sixty-nine, Resolution Authorizing pursuant to Chapter two-ten of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to accept a donation from the Pirates Charity of eleven thousand dollars to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Bill number seventeen seventy, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of O M V to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection's Alternative Fuel Incentive Grant Program to add eight dual-holed electric vehicle charging stations to the Second Avenue Fleet Lot not to exceed one hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. Bill number seventeen seventy-one, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection's Alternative Fuels Incentive Grant Program to purchase non-electric vehicles to be added to the city's fleet not to exceed sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee on Finance and Law. Further discussion begins with Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say a couple of words about Bill seventeen sixty-eight because I think a lot of members had questions last week, and then, uh, the administration was able to forward us some information. Um, so I just wanted to read a little bit of it out loud. Uh, a couple of council members asked, what is the total amount that we have spent on J.D. Edwards? And, um, so the annual sum has ranged from about two million dollars a year in twenty twelve and twenty thirteen, um, when the system was first being implemented, which included a lot of the kind of support for transferring, um, systems. And then, from twenty fourteen through twenty eighteen, um, it has ranged in around, uh, about a million dollars total. Um, the license is just over five hundred thousand dollars a year, and that remains consistent. But then, the amount of services that we paid for direct has varied. Um, and as, I, I just wanted to kind of say, not, uh, that I'm opposed to this specific piece of legislation. We certainly need to, um, continue the duplicate services, make sure that we're continuing support so that we have a payroll system. Um, just to keep repeating, uh, because it's, I think, a continuing issue that we should all be aware of, that I think most municipalities are facing, is that when you've traded off people's support for, um, technology systems, and when technology systems have replaced our, our kind of paper and, and people's systems, um, there's a significant cost, and that we are, become dependent on these, um, outsourced technology solutions. And it really is adding up department by department. Again, Pittsburgh is not unique in this problem. Most of us in our daily lives also really rely on technology. Um, and we know, you know, you start off with a cable bill at thirty dollars a month, and you end up with one that's a hundred and fifty dollars a month, right? I haven't had cable in years for that reason. Too frugal to want to pay that much. But, um, similarly, this is in the millions, right? And so, over that span, not even a ten-year span, um, it's been, uh, somewhat over nine million dollars. Um, and yet, how else are we going to cut paychecks to three thousand people? So, um, I just wanted to kind of share those thoughts, um, and I think this will be a continuing conversation. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris?
Yes, and I'd just like to continue on Councilwoman Gross's piece there. When Act forty-seven actually shoved, uh, J.D. Edwards down our throat, when the school district, uh, probably wouldn't have charged as much, and, uh, actually, they're still way ahead of us in technology. And the spend, uh, just on licenses, three point six million dollars, and services, five point seven million dollars. And, uh, the annual sum up to two thousand eighteen was nine point three million dollars. I think is absolutely ridiculous on how old that system is. We still haven't gotten the answer on exactly how old that system is. But I think it's back in the gay nineties or something. Uh, and we just keep paying and paying and paying. And, uh, that's good taxpayer money that could be used on our neighborhoods, or, uh, I would say, at least, it's from two thousand twelve to two thousand eighteen, nine point three million dollars. It could have been used on a whole new company, a whole new plan for technology. And, uh, I know I've talked to the school board about it, and they had no problems, uh, working with us. But, uh, I remember when this was shoved down our throat, and to find out how old it is, and we just keep paying and paying for it is ridiculous, so I'll be abstaining on this today.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman Coghill?
Yes, I think Councilwoman Gross said the key word here is dependent. For me, it's very bothersome for our departments to be dependent on any type of software or any type of system. Even if they had to revert back to writing checks themselves, you know, we always got to have a backup plan. You know, you can't be dependent on something like that. It's just, and, and I'm glad they're making the strides, I think, to get away from that. I hope so. But it's really just tip of the iceberg, the money that, you know, we, we spend in, in this particular situation. But, um, yeah, I hope in the future we, um, can use, lose that word, dependent, because we're the customer, we should never be dependent on anything.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, uh, Kell Smith?
I just want to, um, echo the concerns here today. I think that, um, I think before, we've mentioned something that we would never vote for this again, and yet, here we are again, voting for it again. And so, um, you know, I, I think that people have had enough time to, like my Councilwoman Harris said, buy a totally different program or work with our universities that are so talented and have so much, so much talent within them. I think that there's got to be another way to, and, and I, and I am, I'm concerned because we are, seem, do seem dependent. But we're also dependent upon the information we're receiving from the people providing it, from the people that need this contract. So, I, I really think having an independent, um, opinion with some of this stuff would be more helpful sometimes, and I wish we had more time to do that and, um, and to find out whether or not, uh, there is a more simpler way or a better way to address this. This is a lot of money, and when I'm, I'm looking at places like Ramview Avenue that's coming over the hillside with sidewalks closing and infrastructure that's crumbling all over the place, and we're searching high and low and turning over every seat cushion to find money, uh, this kind of money on this, on this, again, when we keep saying that we're going to change, we're, we're not going to, we're trying to, you know, get our way out of this, uh, it just seems to me we're really not trying to get our way out of this because I think we could have bought an entirely different program by now. You know, and, and I, I really should talk to my brother. I, I tell people this all the time. He was a Dean at Carnegie Mellon for Computer Science and Engineering, uh, years ago, and he just retired a couple of years back. But I said, I, I have some people that I could actually talk to, I need to do that.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Anyone else for first round of discussion? Then we'll take Councilwoman Harris for second round.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add to that, that, uh, when they were selling this to us at the table, they said we would be able to count down to every pencil, everything on what we had. And till today, we still don't have this system taking us down to every pencil. So, um, I don't know whose frenzies are that we just keep paying and paying them, but, uh, we're sure getting a lot.
Okay, thanks, Councilwoman. Uh, seeing no further discussion then, the bills under our Committee on Finance and Law are ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye on all bills except for, uh, I believe it's seven sixty-eight. I'll, I'll abstain.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
On Bill seventeen sixty-eight, ayes, seven, one abstention. All other bills, ayes, eight, no, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having then received the legally required number of votes, have finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Public Work Services. Our Chair is Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill number seventeen ninety-seven, Report of the Committee on Public Works for June nineteenth, twenty nineteen, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seventeen seventy-eight, Resolution Granting Unto Saddles' Property, Their Successors, and Asigns a Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain and Use of Their Own Costs and Expense, Handicap Ramp with Handrail at ten sixteen Fifth Avenue in the First Ward, Sixth Council District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Under our Public Works, uh, Services Committee, do we have further discussion on the bill? Okay, seeing none, the bill's now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Ayes, eight, no, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill, having received the legally required number of votes, has finally passed. Next, we have our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Our Chair is Councilwoman Deborah Gross. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number seventeen ninety-eight, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for June nineteenth, twenty nineteen, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seventeen seventy-two, Resolution Amending Resolution Number ninety-eight of the Residential Parking Permit Program Area KK in the South Side Flats Community, Council District Three. Bill number seventeen seventy-three, Resolution Amending Resolution Number three sixty-three for the Residential Parking Permit Program Area X in the Shady Side Community, Council District Eight. Bill number seventeen seventy-four, Resolution Amending Resolution Number thirteen, Providing for an Agreement with Consultants and Vendors to Assist the City in Developing Plans and Studies to Support the Development of an Oakland Neighborhood Plan and Provide for the Payment at a Cost thereof not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars by Specifying the Consultant Team Selected for the Project and Updating the Operating Budget Year and Account Number.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills under our Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Do we have further discussion on the bills? And seeing none, these bills are now ready for final action, and all in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Ayes, eight, no, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having received then the legally required number of votes, have finally passed. Our final committee of the morning is our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Our Chair is Councilman Corey O'Connor. May I have Councilman Lavelle for Councilman O'Connor? Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number seventeen ninety-nine, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for June nineteenth, twenty nineteen, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number seventeen seventy-six, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Forty-third Street Town Homes at one seventy-two Forty-third Street. Bill number seventeen seventy-seven, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the M. Hurst Group, One Big ol' Square Suite, six thirty.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the reading and the title of these bills under our Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Do we have further discussion on other of the bills? Okay, seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their names are called. Those opposed will vote no. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus, President?
Aye.
Ayes, eight, no, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bills, having received the legally required number of votes, have finally passed. That takes us into motions and resolutions. The Chair has a few brief meeting announcements. This afternoon at one thirty, council is hosting a cable cast public hearing on Bill seventeen thirty-five as it relates to a liquor license transfer application for Woods House LLC. for Woods House LLC. Then after the hearing at 2:30, council will hold executive session as it relates to matters of ethics. Also, please note that due to the Fourth of July holiday next week, council will host both of their legislative and standing committee meetings next Monday, July the first, at 10:00 a.m. and 11:30 p.m., respectively. With that, I'll move to Councilwoman Harris, then Councilwoman Kelsmith.
Yes, I do have quite a few interns in my office this year, and I'm lucky to have them all because they're all great workers. And I just wanted to let them stand up so that you know who they are. Sit down to get your name, so everybody knows you by name. Okay. Bird Graham, he's a constituent service liaison, attends LaSalle University in Philadelphia, and he graduated from Central Catholic. Okay, I thought I'd hear some things. Okay, and then we have Chelsa Arlington, and she's work-based learning coordinator, attending the University of Pittsburgh, Masters in Social Services, which we deeply need around here. 2008, graduated from Claritin University, and in 2014, graduated from Obama. Okay, and then we have Brooke Laurie. She's my summer intern, graduated from Shadyside Academy, attending Howard University in the fall in Political Science. And Javon, summer intern, graduated from Perry High School. And he's on his way to college, too. Just don't know which one yet, correct? Okay, and then we have Brandon Taylor, summer intern, graduate of Pennsylvania Leadership Charter School, attends Culinary Arts School in the fall to be a chef. Can't wait to taste the food that he'll make. So I think I have a great group this year. We're going to get a lot of things done before the end of the year. So I just wanted everyone out here, and the public, to meet our interns that are here for, mostly to the end of the year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Kelsmith?
Thank you. I also have an intern in my office, Chris Talbot Whittle, but he's not here. I mean, he's doing something in the back. So I just want to introduce him too, but, and thank the Department of Personnel for the opportunity to have so many talented young people in our offices. And I just really want to make a couple comments about the... People have been hearing on the news about Grandview Avenue and the crumbling sidewalks and some of the decay that's happening up on that area. I just, I want to thank Dan Gilman and Mayor Perdido's office for his quick response. I think that, you know, for decades, you know, there's been a lack of investment in that infrastructure. But there were some basic services that we should have been providing in the city and hadn't been in terms of the weeds and painting fences and basic maintenance. And although I want to thank Dan Gilman and Mayor Perdido for searching for funding and working on the funding for some of the repairs, that's, it's going to be around a million dollars. And this is just for the current infrastructure. There are so many other needs on that hillside that it's in the millions if we do everything that needs to be done. And we have had a walk-through, and I can't remember who all was there, if there was any other council members. You may have been there, or somebody from your office. But we had walk-throughs with Congressman Doyle, Senator Fontana, State Representative Deasy, Harry Reach, Representative Harry Reachall, trying to find funding for Grandview Avenue. I didn't take them to look at the view. I took them to look at Grandview and see the, the work that needs done up there. And we've had meetings in the mayor's office with MW CDC as well, and other folks, and, and all those folks I just mentioned, trying to figure out a way to find funding for the area. About a year ago, Congressman Doyle did say that he would help us identify funding for Grandview, but we, he needed a study so he could use that to leverage, you know, additional dollars. But the study was a million dollars. So we decided instead of doing the study, we would do the work, because the community wanted us to do the immediate work. But what I want to say is that while I'm watching across this, across my, my district, I definitely feel the closure of the 4th Division in our area, that we're seeing so much of this weeds and debris that we have never seen before. And I mean, we shouldn't take an act of the, of the Chief of Staff, of the mayor, who is so busy with so many things, to worry about getting weeds cut. And, but it did, and, and I just want to thank him for that. But I do think that we need to look into and question why. And he is beginning, and Chief of Staff Gilman is questioning why it wasn't done, why, why weeds weren't cut, why railings weren't painted, why things, why trees aren't... You know, we know the trees are more of a questionable thing that has to happen, because the last time they cut trees, the hillside came down. And while we want to keep the view, we want to keep the, the road up, too. So there's a lot going on on Grandview, and I just want to assure people that the mayor's office is working on it. I want to thank Mayor Perdido and Dan Gilman for their work on this, and Director Gable and Director Ricks, because they're putting a lot of time in. And we have one of the best divisions in the 5th Division, some of the best employees. So that when, when I see things like weeds aren't cut and painting, it makes me wonder and question what's going on that they weren't done, because our division is amazing, and you know that. We have a lot of amazing workers there. So it leaves a lot of question. But I do want to say this is a regional asset, and we really do need our state and federal elected officials to help identify funding without us having to spend a million dollars to get it. We need some, we need some help in that area. And I do want to thank those who have met with us and those who have said that they would work with us. But I think until people realize this is a regional asset that... But I also want to point out, we're talking about raising taxes with Pittsburgh, you know, for Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy to do some work. Part of their agreement in Mount Washington, as I can recall, and I want to say, I have, I asked for a copy of the agreement, was that they were going to take, write grants for Grandview Scenic Byway, which includes that half of Grandview and McGarville Roadway. And I believe they had written one grant and didn't receive it, or didn't run a grant. I can't remember what happened. But if we're talking about giving them more money, let's hold them accountable for the money that they, and the projects they're supposed to be doing now. And, and so I just want to say, it's not just one group of people, one group or one department. There's a lot of people that have failed that area, and it's been decades of disinvestment. The more serious issues are the structure underground. It's not a simple sidewalk fix. It's $500,000, because it's basically the sidewalk is sitting on top of hollow, I mean, there's, there's nothing underneath it. I mean, one little, I think, one pedestal or something. And so the sidewalks are hollow. It's not like they can just go put in a sidewalk. So I want to tell people, if you're planning on going to Mount Washington for the Fourth of July, you can still go up there. You still can see the views. But please make sure you respect the barriers that are up there, and, because we don't want somebody falling through one of those barriers and straight through the sidewalk, because there is no, it's a drop. It's a significant drop.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
I understand the repairs are to be completed by end of August?
No, they begin in August, because there's so many repairs. They begin in August, and the, well, some of the projects have started. They've started weeding and doing some of this stuff. And...
The structural repairs.
Yeah. And I do want to say, some of this was already in the budget. So when people say, oh, we called the media, no, that usually makes us not want to do it. But what I would tell you is that the, some of these projects were already in the budget, some of them were already planned, some of the things that weren't planned were the, were the weeds and debris that should have been cut. Nobody, you know, understood why that wasn't being done. And the sidewalk collapsing was not planned. Nobody planned for a sidewalk to fall in. So yes, we are responding now, because if a sidewalk go in, you have to. And when we saw the, Chief of Staff Gilman saw the weeds and debris and things, the basic maintenance that needed done up there, he started asking questions, and rightfully so, and I'm glad that he did. But I do want to say that I don't blame the crews, because our crews are such hard workers. I wonder where the decisions were to divert those resources away from Grandview Avenue. But I will say that I'm thankful that Chief of Staff Gilman's helping us.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harris?
Yeah, I want to say the same thing about the weeds. We send in the 1st Division every year, and it's the same weeds, same streets, because we've collected them over the years. And we send them in before they even get up. So now we had sent them into Director Gable's office. So we're hoping to get the weeds done, but I don't see how they can possibly, you know, go past weeds that are four foot out in the middle of the street, around bends where people can't even see going around, when we give them a list where they can go boom, 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 and get those weeds done. It shouldn't take a call to 311. It should be done. And, you know, they get the same list every year. So this time, we got to give it to the director. Also, I'm just saying this for, to try to find out. I'm curious, because so many people are starting to get electric cars. And if we're installing a dual-hose electric vehicle charger stations, will they be open to the public?
It's not a question for me, Councilwoman. This is a question for the department. But I would offer no for city vehicles. But you'll find your answer in the department.
Okay, so you would have thought they would have put the answer in here, but the public paid for all this. So you would think that if the public was in that area and they weren't using one of these chargers, that it would be open to the public.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Coghill?
First, I want to thank Councilwoman Kelsmith for her leadership up in Mount Washington. For me, that's very important. I mean, you know, people's view of Pittsburgh, you know, one place they flock to is Grandview Avenue. It's iconic up there, and, you know, that sets an impression of the city up there. So I think it's important for that to be, you know, well taken care of and well maintained from here on out. The other thing, since we're on the issue of introducing our interns, I can't quite compete with Councilwoman Harris's basketball team over here. But, but I did bring my own intern in, and this, this is Ms. Shontae Solomon. Shontae, stand up for us, would you please, and say hello? Shontae is attending the Heinz School of CMU, and she's right out of Brooklyn, New York. So she's here, it's her first, first year in Pittsburgh, and she's going to work on some flooding issues for us.
That's great. Thank you. Welcome. Welcome to all.
I just want to say, I'm sorry. I just want to say that when we're talking about all the weeds and debris, I think a lot of what we're missing is, and I say this all the time, is the red-up crew, because this is where they would come in, and they would have cut down whatever needed done. They would have gone on private property and cut private property and then issued a citation. So I just want to say, that is something that we need. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Harris, I'm starting you up again. But I just want to say, I think that that is something that the Women's Caucus has been discussing, that something other council members have discussed, is how we can bring something back in, some type of program back, similar to the red-up. But it's going to be difficult to replace that crew, because they were amazing, and they did a lot of work. And I think really a lot of the reasons why we're seeing so much weeds and debris now is because we've had so much rain. But you still have to get out there and cut the weeds, whether, if you can't use the electrical equipment or whatever kind of equipment, use hand equipment. We need to get it done.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Harris?
Yeah, I have to say the same thing. I think that's one of the biggest issues, is when they got rid of the red-up crew, which was a political move. And we wouldn't have these problems right now. They started when Bob O'Connor was the mayor, and continued until we had this mayor now. Same with PWSA, was the same exact problem. We had great people that worked for PWSA. We had a great chemist, and they were all taken out of the offices, people with 25, 35 years' knowledge, and a chemist that was world-renowned, actually. And they bring in, had a guy that consulted with us, and he brought his friends in. And they decided to put that chemical in, which ain't on the lead pipes. All these problems, all these millions of dollars that are going out there digging up streets are because of political reasons. It's unbelievable. Unbelievable. And to this day, we can't drink the water. It's sad. Now, they did bring Stanley back in, and a couple of the other ones to help. But when the damage is done, it's done. Sad.
Good. Thank you very much. With nothing further from members, may I have a motion to approve our minutes. Excuse your absent member in adjourned meeting.
Sim.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.